Okay, it being 6:30, I'm going to call to order a meeting of the Oregon School District Board of Education. It is Monday, September 12th, 2022. We are in the OSD Innovation Center at Oregon High School. Katie, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Bijak?
Here.
Ms. Garrison?
Dr. Lakuta?
Here.
Mr. LeBrun?
Here.
Mr. Pankrats?
Present.
Ms. Wright?
Here.
Ms. Flanagan?
Present. Board does have a quorum, and I do have from Ms. Heights that this meeting has been properly noticed, so we are good there. Before I entertain a motion to approve the agenda, we are going to have one change to the agenda. We are going to move up under Information Items E4, Teaching and Learning Update. We are going to move that up to number four under B, Information Items, because we do have a special guest here this evening. So I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that change. Is there a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Katie, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Pankrats?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Dr. Lakuta?
Yeah.
Mr. LeBrun?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes, motion carries 6-0, and I did fail to mention Ms. Garrison is out of town tonight, so she is not able to be here this evening. So, all right, moving on to A, Consent Calendar. We do have our normal items under the consent calendar. We do have some donations, so I will read those. We have $1,500 from the Oregon Soccer Club for an anti-bullying effort. We have $2,500 from the Class of 2022, which is a donation to food service for unpaid balances of OHS students. And then we have a $3,683.90 donation from Tim O'Brien Homes of Madison for our home build program. So, pretty special donations tonight, so we do thank those individuals in the class of 2022 for those donations to our district. So I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. All right, we have a motion and a second. Katie, could you please call the roll?
Yes. LeBrun? Dr. Lakuta?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Mr. Pankrats?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes, motion carries 6-0. All right, moving on to B, Information Items. Do we have anyone here registered to speak as part of public comment? All right, we do not have anyone. Is there anyone here to speak for public comment? Okay, last time, is there anyone here to speak as part of public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. OEA report, we do not have a representative from the OEA, so we will not have that report tonight. And then student reports, since we're only in the second week of school, we are working on the students that will serve here, so we'll have them to our meetings pretty soon, so we can hear about things that are going on at Oregon High School. All right, moving to the new B4, which is Teaching and Learning Update. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bergstrom so she can make introductions.
Thank you. As part of the Teaching and Learning Update, I would like to introduce a guest this evening, and that is Dane County Executive Joe Parisi. Mr. Parisi, if you'd like to come up here. And while he is getting settled, I'll talk a little bit about the really productive partnership between Dane County and the Oregon School District, because we have lots of things that we have been working on in common. For several years now, Dane County has offered the partnership with the Building Bridges Program. Dane County, the Oregon School District, and Catholic Charities have been able to support about 24 families per year due to the partnership with Dane County. In addition, in 2122, we were the recipients of the Emotional Wellness and Mental Health Support Grant, which took us very far in the ability to bring in mental health providers into our schools and support families who are uninsured and accessing that care. Character Strong Curriculum is another example that comes from that. And then finally, the 2223, we just recently received another school-based Behavioral Health Service Grant, which is another exciting piece. You can tell the priorities that are coming to us from our county. And then finally, one of the things he's here to celebrate tonight is we were the 2021 Net Zero Energy Use Climate Champion. We received that award, and it came from the Dane County Office of Energy and Climate Change. So thank you for being here tonight and for sharing some of the exciting things that are happening with our school board.
Thank you, and thank you for giving me some time to come and chat with you tonight. I really appreciate your partnership as well, because everything you mentioned isn't just us. It's Dane County, it's us, and it's us together with you, and I really appreciate it, and I think we've been able to do a lot of good things for our young people. And yeah, so tonight I came by to talk about some of our climate change activities in addressing climate change. And, you know, I think until recently, it might have been considered almost a strange or a different kind of topic to come and talk to a school board about, right? But I think on a number of levels, it's been very important. I've been addressing a number of school boards this year about it. I mean, one, you know, it's something that our young people are incredibly concerned about and interested in addressing. And I think we all agree, just like I know from your actions, that we owe it to them to partner with them and help them shape, you know, a better world that they're going to have to live in for a very long time. So, I, you know, in addition to that, I appreciate so much your efforts. And I was mentioning earlier when we were talking that I hold Oregon School District up as an example, and I brag about you guys all the time because of the great work that you've done. And, you know, building the first net zero school is an amazing accomplishment, and being first is never easy. You know, being first is being first and everything that comes with that. And, but the importance of being first and having people who are willing to take that risk and then have a successful outcome is that it makes it that much less scary for folks to follow in your footsteps. Because, you know, if I had a nickel for every time someone said, "Boy, we'd like to do some of this, but we're not sure how or not sure if it would work," which is a reasonable, reasonable thing to say, especially when you're in the public, in the public sector, and you're investing tax dollars and taking care of people. But, but you did it, and it was successful, and so now there's another piece of the roadmap for people who are interested in doing, in doing so. And so that's, you know, that's one of the reasons you got the Climate Champion Award. You're a leader, you did it, you did it right. And that award is not only to recognize the good work that you do, but again, to show others that people are doing it. Then the kind of question becomes after a while, "Well, why aren't you doing it?" Right? So, there's a, there's a method to our, our doing these things, a meaning to this also, and I appreciate it. And speaking of that, you know, I thought before I started, maybe we could play a video that you may or may not have seen, that our Office of Energy and Climate Change produced, highlighting your efforts here. That'd be a good time to go ahead and do that?
I'm Andy Wyland, and I'm the Business Manager for the Oregon School District. The building that we built, Forest Edge Elementary, is a net zero school, which essentially means that it makes as much energy as it uses for an entire year. The technologies that are involved in the school are, there's two main ones, and those are geothermal heat pumps. So they use the earth's more stable temperature to both heat and cool the building, as well as the photovoltaic cells that we have on top of the roofs. Other technologies in the building include glass, called sage glass, that allows us to tint the glass, and allows us to keep the heat from the sun actually out of the building.
We took really purposeful planning to put together an experience for kids that is really unique to the traditional elementary experience. Each area has a different theme of energy, so the idea is, as kids matriarchulate up through our system, they've had a little learning around all areas. We have some really great graphics on smart TVs, so we can see our energy use, our water use, how much garbage we recycled, all the things that tie to the learning we want kids to have. The couple of things that are really unique to our design, we have some indoor courtyards. One is a pretty traditional kindergarten play area, but two are more for outdoor learning.
We work with students that are going to be around for a long time, and we want to help them understand kind of the climate challenges that are ahead of them. We are the first net zero school in the state. That's part of the beauty of Forest Edge, is it's almost like a laboratory for other people to come see how we've been able to do this.
Feel free to use and share as often and as widely as you like. You should be so proud. And it's, you know, what I, what I love about your story there, too, is, you know, coming from a business manager, it had to make sense. It had to not only be the right thing to do for the environment, but it had to make sense fiscally and for the long term. So, thank you. And I love the educational aspect of it, and showing young people what's possible, and those kinds of things really, I think, give young people hope. They see that we care, and they see there's a way, and it gives me hope, too. So, thanks again, I really appreciate that. So, I thought I would talk to you a little bit about some of what Dane County Government has done, and both internally and then some of our external efforts. We've gone on a journey over the past probably decade, I would say, of looking at how we can become more sustainable. And there have been two parts to it. We've looked at, first of all, the adaptation piece. You know, we know climate change is coming. In the last few years, it's been here, right, and quicker than a lot of us thought it was going to happen. But, so what we started doing a number of years ago is, we saw what was happening on a global scale and in the desert southwest, et cetera. We teamed up with the university and asked them if they could help us do some projections on what we were going to have to deal with here locally, and how that could impact county operations, and what we had to do to prepare. As you know, we touched so many different areas: human services, public health, highways, snow plowing, emergency management, et cetera. So, they, we worked together, and they gave us their forecast, and it really forecasted what we ended up seeing, you know, in earnest, beginning around 2018 with the floods. They projected that we would see warmer and wetter weather, particularly in the winters, and we would see more 90-degree days, warmer nights, and we would see downfalls that would be different than perhaps what we experienced when those of us around this table were growing up. And they would be more like we've been seeing lately, more this, you know, so much rain all at once and continuing to come down, which it continued, it seemed like, forever in 2018, and what we dealt with there. So what we did is, we had all of our department heads and their strategic plans start building in how these local impacts through climate change would impact their departments. For example, the Public Health Department, they are seeing and will continue to see certain diseases, insect-borne diseases, that they, we didn't see in the past because of the warmer weather. Our Highway Department has had to change how it engineers some of its roads and the size culverts that it uses. Our Human Services Department, our Emergency Management Department, and on and on, have all built in that resiliency to their planning. So, once we, once we kind of crossed that bridge and got folks thinking and planning for how to adapt, we started looking at, well, what can we do as county government, just like you looked at, what can you do, you know, as a school district to do our part to reduce the impacts of the greenhouse gases that we generate and generate fewer greenhouse gas emissions. So first of all, we went to, as I'm sure you know, the most efficient, you know, first step, and that's energy efficiency. We started budgeting a couple million dollars annually toward energy efficiency. We have so many different facilities and buildings, many of them older, and we started doing retrogrades, insulation, you know, upgrading, you know, HVAC systems, et cetera. And then with new constructions, started looking at how we were building that, because as you learned with your project, if you build it in on the front end, that's when you can really do the most, and it's the most effective. So that's what we started doing with efficiency. And then we started looking at renewables, and looking first at rooftops and areas that could accept solar. And today, we have 17 different solar arrays at various county facilities, be it, you know, most of them you don't see because they're up on roofs of buildings. The most visible, the two most visible probably are, we have one at, if you've ever been there, Lunny Lake Farm Park, and there's a lucifer center there. It's a campground also. And we've made that a basically 100% renewable campground. We put solar, it's great if you're a solar geek like me. We have solar on all of the roofs. We have, we built park shelters, that the roofs are solar panels, and then have some ground mount solar. And so that, we have a building there that hosts meetings and wedding receptions and offices. That's 100% solar offset. And then all the camping facilities are 100% renewable offset also. So it's, we call it our Clean Green Park. And the one that's, the facility, the array that you would have potentially seen that's even bigger is out by our airport. If you're driving down Highway 51 and you see that big solar array, that's ours. Actually, it's MG&E. What we did there is, once we ran out of roofs, we started looking at land. And around the airport, we have land that you can't develop, and so we identified a large area of land out there that would be acceptable for solar. And when you're, when you're working near an airport, you have to do studies with FAA, because you don't want to be blinding the pilots. That can ruin everyone's day from the sun bouncing off of there. So we found the right area with the right angle, and we approached MG&E, and we said, you know, "We have this great plot of land here that's perfect to develop solar. If you would develop some solar there, we will lease you the land." At, the business manager will appreciate that. "We will lease you the land at market rate, because FAA makes us do that," so we couldn't even give them a deal on it. "And we would like you to build the solar field, and in return, we promise we'll buy all the electricity that it generates from you." And by the way, we would actually like to pay a little less than we're paying now, if you can do that for us, too. And so they did the math and worked it out. It was really no risk for them, because they had a guaranteed customer, and they built, it's about a seven or eight megawatt solar field on that, on that plot of land. It offsets about 40% of all of county government's electricity that we use annually, and we save over $100,000 a year on our electric bill just from that one project. So this is another one of those, you know, no more discussion about, gee, the environment, or being fiscally responsible. Now, it's, you know, doing right by the environment is more often than not the fiscally responsible thing to do. So again, the question becomes, well, if you have some land, why aren't you doing that? You know, and that's the message we'd like to share with other counties and other municipalities about the opportunity that exists. So we have a goal by 2025 of having 100% offset of all the electricity that we use in county government operations. And so, we realized we were going to need another solar farm in order to do that, and one about twice as big as that one that we developed with MG&E. So we identified another large plot of land out by our landfill, and we are currently in a partnership with Alliant Energy, building a solar field that will be about twice as big as that one. It'll have in the neighborhood of 35,000, it's either 33 or 38, and I don't know the numbers, so I'll say 35,000 solar panels in that one field. And we're actually ahead of our goal, timeline, in reaching our goal of 100% offset, because when we flip the switch on that, in January, we will have achieved 100% offset of all the electricity that county government uses. And that's a lot. So we're really excited about that piece. Now, our next goal that we've set for ourselves, and we're trying to be aggressive, and we're following the goals of the IPCC, of the international community, when they're looking at what we need to do to keep warming down to 1.5 degrees. And that is to be carbon neutral by 2030. Now, that's more of a challenge than just offsetting electricity, because we also have a ton of vehicles. We have a whole bunch of buildings that are heated with mostly gas right now, producing a whole bunch of carbon and other, other greenhouse gases. So, our plan to be carbon neutral by 2030 includes two things. First of all, we own a landfill in county government, and landfills can be a big headache. They're expensive, they generate methane gas, which, as you probably know, is a very powerful greenhouse gas, much more so than CO2. But what we do, we did a first of, first to do it project ourself just a few years ago, and it's up there on the, I guess it's up here, too, or in front of you on the left, that, that, that facility, I don't know for lack of a better term, we built about a 28-ish million-dollar facility that we were pretty sure was going to work, that takes all of the methane gas that's generated in our landfill. We have pipes throughout the landfill, we take out the methane gas. It goes through this facility, and this facility cleans it and compresses it to be transportation-grade fuel. And we do two things with that fuel. We fuel a number of our own vehicles, because over the years, we've been taking our, as our trucks and our larger, larger vehicles that get bad gas mileage come up for replacement, we're replacing them with vehicles that run on compressed natural gas. Now, regular compressed natural gas, it's better than diesel, most people would, would say, but it's still a fossil fuel. So what we're doing now is we create, we make our own renewable natural gas, made out of the rotting trash from the landfill. And we're up to over 100 vehicles now that run on that. And half of our highway fleet, and our highway fleet, you know, placing those big orange trucks that plow snow, they probably get about four or five miles a gallon, they run on dirty diesel, right? Now, half of them run on compressed natural gas, and will keep on as the fleet turns over, replacing the rest of them. And the beauty of this, in addition to the greenhouse gas reduction, because RNG, renewable natural gas, is the cleanest transportation fuel available right now, is that it costs a buck and a half a gallon, and while diesel now is over $5 a gallon. So again, that, the fiscal piece of this really works. Now, we did, as you may be thinking, we did invest about $28 million in there, so that's, you know, that's a lot of vehicle miles to make up the difference. But what we do is, we generate and produce much more than we can use ourselves. And so, the way that we make money off of this, in addition to the money we save, we sell the remaining CNG, our CNG, to QuickTrip. And they purchase it. You may have noticed some QuickTrips have CNG stations. A lot of fleet vehicles use it. So, so we sell it to them, and we make a profit off of that. And then what we're entering now, we've been in the last few years, but will become growing, is there's a renewable energy credit market out there, especially from California and other places. And we, you know, we, people purchase those credits from us, and we are actually, we are actually netting several million dollars a year off of this facility. It'll be paid off in a few years, and then the rest, and I don't have to tell you how hard it is to come by operating funds when you're in a school district or a local use of government. So, it's this enterprise that's making money and helping protect our environment. And another neat way that this has folded into some of our other efforts, we have a lot of Clean Lakes efforts going on, and the, what you see up in the right-hand corner, that's a picture of a manure digester. And the manure digesters originally were developed for our Clean Lakes work that we do, because they take the manure from multiple farms, they put it through an anaerobic digestion process, they take out the phosphorus, which is what feeds the algae in our lakes and creates so much of our problem. But as, when they, when it goes through the anaerobic digestion process, it extracts the methane gas, and so you have all this methane gas. And so what we did, and so, so they needed a market for that gas. And so what we did is, in our plant that we built, we built an offload station so that our local farmers could truck in their compressed natural gas and offload it into the pipeline. Oh, I didn't mention, we got very fortunate, too. We got very lucky, too. We have a natural gas pipeline that goes literally through our property at the landfill. Sometimes, you're living right and things work out. And so, it was right there, so tapping into it was still a lot of work and regulation and permitting and everything, but we're there. And so, so the, so the digester operators now bring their gas to our, to our facility and offload it and sell it the same way we do, and get the credits, and that makes those operations financially viable. So you're helping reduce the methane caused by agriculture, and at the same time, you're, we're enabling that to happen through this, through their ability to sell the gas and get the renewable energy credits. So that's a piece of it. Then the final piece of, you know, offsetting our, our carbon is through sequestration. You know, we're fortunate in Dane County, we're, you know, we're, we do have a lot of, a lot of land, and we already, is, again, as part of our other Clean Lakes work, we've, we've looked for land to purchase that is environmentally sensitive, both for its ability to hold water when it rains, to reduce flooding impacts, and to reduce runoff, again, from farm fields and places like that, of phosphorus. So we look for, you know, vulnerable acreage that's near streams or the lakes themselves, streams that run into the lakes. One such purchase was in Middleton a few years ago. There's, there's Pheasant Branch Creek in Middleton, which suffered greatly during the floods, a big way. It's also a very sensitive area for runoff, because anything that runs off into there goes right in Lake Mendota, and that goes through the chain of lakes. And so there was a farm there, 160 acres about, I believe, that was up for sale, and it had been farmed for generations, and it was actually on the open market, zoned to be residential, and people had even plotted it out. It was going to be a residential development, and we looked at it, and it was just, we had two concerns. First of all, it's right adjacent to the Pheasant Branch Nature Preserve, and again, as I mentioned, Pheasant Branch Creek. And so, you know, even if you took the ag piece out, which would reduce some of the phosphorus runoff, with, with a dense development like they had planned with- phosphorus runoff with, with a, with a dense development like they had planned with houses and parking lots and streets, the amount of runoff going into Pheasant Branch Creek would be, just make flooding even worse in a heavy rain event. So we purchased that property and we're in the process, we're doing about 40 acres a summer. We, we've restored the wetlands and we're restoring it to prairie. So that'll help with when it rains to absorb that water. It'll help reduce nutrient runoff because the, the prairies will, any phosphorus in the soil will be sequestered and it will sequester carbon. An acre of prairie sequesters roughly as much carbon as an acre of forested land, which I was kind of mind boggling when I learned that, but, but the deep root systems and the ability to draw carbon into the land. And so, you know, we have many and we continue to look for other such opportunities. We have a, you know, an annual budget for land acquisition. And so we've hired an additional specialist. So now we have two restoration specialists and they use tons of volunteers, hundreds of volunteers. People are so, so helpful with this and it's really great. And we restore prairies and every fall volunteers go and they collect the seeds and then we restore more prairie the next year. And so we're, we're doing all of our calculations and, and looking at our acquisitions along with everything else that we're doing in order to sequester what we can't stop. Then the final, I'll let you get on with your meeting. I apologize, I feel like I'm really going on here. As, as you, you probably know, our climate, our, our climate work in the community is headed by Kathy Kuntz, who, who we mentioned earlier. Few years ago, I created an Office of Energy and Climate Change in my office to head this work and direct this work just because of the importance of it. And that office, which Kathy now, now runs, put together with working with the community, a climate action plan for all of, all of Dane County, for folks beyond just county government. And, you know, at another time, if you'd ever like, or, you know, she could tell you a little bit more about that, or there's, there's, there's information on it. There's actually a webpage on the county webpage about the Office of Energy and Climate Change. And we have a network of local governments and school districts of which you're a part. We work with the business community. We work with grassroots organizations who, you know, what can we do? We're working now trying to be a clearinghouse for people, for technology and information, kind of the, we want to do this, how do we start? Right now we're putting together all of the information from the recent infrastructure bill to help people navigate that and see how they, they can utilize the, the, the benefits from that because there's a lot of really good stuff in it. And I have to say, this work has been great. I mean, it's just, we've been able to accomplish so much. And, you know, this last couple of years is the first time we've ever had any help on the federal government. So to see, from the federal government, so to see that coming now is really, i- is really inspirational. But, you know, we started when there wasn't any help from the federal government or the state government. And the, the, the neat thing to realize was, we realized we can do so much, not only here at home, but there's so much momentum going. And if, and if all of those counties and all of the municipalities and all the school districts do things like you do, you know, we can really make a difference and we are making a difference. And that's why I'm so excited about your work and so happy about, to be able to work, do the work we're doing because then other people see that and you gain momentum and a lot of work is getting done. So I think I'll stop there. I apologize if I took up too much time during your meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions, but just thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. We'll just go around the horn if anyone has any quick questions. Leslie, start with you.
I don't have any questions. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Anna?
Just really impressive. I took a whole page of notes.
Oh, I'm so glad.
It's so awesome. It's something I really admire and I'm glad to have a leader in our county that can provide that type of leadership. So thank you.
Thanks.
Tim, anything?
It's nice to hear about the success of being first.
Yeah.
Because now people are coming to you.
Yeah.
I, I've been out to the digester out at the landfill and I see these trucks coming in from farms well outside of Dane County.
Yeah, it's great.
And so that is spreading the word.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and giving other counties a chance to say, is that working now?
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Yeah, it's really exciting. We have about, we give about 150 tours out there a year. And there is now a county in Illinois that is about to start work on a plant like we did because of what we did. They came up and saw it and we gave them technical assistance. So that's really exciting to see that multiply effect happen.
Mary?
Thank you very much. It's really interesting to hear all of the, with this being done. So the only question I have really is, one of the things I have seen in New Jersey is solar panels over like parking spaces. I realize we get a lot more snow in general than they do. Is that something that would be feasible and useful here?
I think so. I mean, I think, you know, if, if people have specific projects in mind, I think those are a little more expensive to build. So it would all depend on the, you know, just on the configuration of what you're working with. But, you know, they have those out at Epic, if you've ever been out there, or their parking. So it's definitely a thing that can happen. What I like about that too, it's like, you know, it's, the more I think we can get on solar, we can get on structures and roofs, the more we can avoid some of the challenges and some of the battles that are going to be inevitable of where to put, you know, bigger solar. I mean, we're going to need both, but there's so many rooftops that are available and so many parking lots, et cetera, that I think it's a great idea.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, like that.
Troy?
No questions, but just to echo my fellow board members, it was fascinating to, to hear you speak and really proud to live in Dane County and to, to be, you know, in this, in this county that is, is really, you know, moving the needle on, on making change and, and working towards reducing greenhouse gases, et cetera. So Anna and I are both civil engineers, so I'm, I'm just kind of fascinated as you're talking about anaerobic digesters and runway design and roadways.
If you ever want to nerd out, if you ever want any more information, we can get you a tour, we can get you information. We, we love sharing. Our staff are, are just great on every level and they love talking about this stuff and showing people too. So never, don't hesitate.
Great, yeah. And looking forward to future partnerships with the Oregon School District.
Yeah, likewise, likewise. Well, and thank you because the only reason we're able to do this is because this is a community that wants us to do it, right? You couldn't do this in a, there are a lot of places you wouldn't be able to do what we've done. And, you know, hopefully, and we're able to, because it's a reflection of what the community wants. So it's, it's, it's really an honor to be in the position I'm in, representing such a great community that says, yeah, go do that stuff. Like, okay, I guess.
Well, I'm not a civil engineer, but I've been on this board for seven years and it's really been a great partnership in terms of not only working with you on sustainability, but also on mental health services. The partnerships that you've created have really benefited our kids and families and that's been very, very important to this district as we know some kids are struggling and it's important for us to help them. I think the one question I have too is, we do like to be a district that's first and a leader and we also like to get ahead of things in terms of, you've talked about sustainability and long-term benefits of that and mental health services. You know, it's a little bit reactive, but we like to get in the front of that. And so, you know, we have other things in this district that we're working on, you know, potentially birth to three before kids get in school, preparing them. So I think it's, you know, it's important for us to hear from you that you would like us to bring those programs to you or ideas that we have that can really benefit the county or be a pilot program here and then be expanded. So are you open to those sorts of programs or us coming to you with some of those ideas that we can potentially have partnerships on?
Yeah, absolutely, because that's, that's in our lane, right? I mean, some of this stuff isn't just education, it isn't just human services. It's, you know, and we do a lot of work in that area. So yeah, happy to, happy to talk details about it.
Great. Well, thank you very much for being here. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Bergstrom?
No, other than thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate the time.
Have a good night. Okay, moving on to see action items. The action item we have tonight is the 2022-2023 preliminary budget. So we'll have a presentation from Andy and then opportunity to ask questions. But before we do that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bergstrom to kind of set the stage for that discussion.
Thank you. I want to mention that before we begin to talk about the proposed preliminary budget, that we talk about the context in which we are presenting this proposal to the board tonight. Because there are some factors that I think are very critical for anybody on the board, but also people who are watching, critical to understand related to this preliminary budget. And the first is, the current state funding situation has led this to be a deficit budget. And I think it's really important to put out the fact that Andy Wieland has said that this is the first time in his career in the Oregon School District, which is over 22 years, this is the first time that he has presented the board with a deficit budget. And that's the impact of state funding on our ability to do what we need to do for our students and for our staff. It's very unusual times. The next is it's a deficit budget and we also, within that budget, there is no ability to give any raises to any staff. So he will be presenting the budget with an existing deficit, but then you also have to imagine adding on to that the fact that it's a budget that has no room for any raises. And I think that's a really important thing for people to understand so that even though the deficit may be a certain number, it's actually much, much higher, potentially all the way up to $6 million if you think about the 5.93% that we haven't been able to give our staff and isn't going to be in this budget either. And then finally, a reminder, and Mr. Wieland is going to talk about this over and over again, but one-time money, while very appreciated, cannot contribute to our ongoing operating expenses. And so we'll be discussing that a few times throughout the course of the evening. Then you're also going to notice that there are some things that I think the, the best term for them is carryover funds. They're one-time money that is strategically allocated for multi-year projects. So it may look like, oh, look at, you've got all this money. In actuality, that is money that's already allocated for multi-year projects and it's one-time money. So it's not money available for salary and benefits. And I think that, that's something we've discussed over and over, is the importance of operational funds that can be spent on what takes up 80% of our budget, which is salary and benefits. And we know how important that is in a competitive market. And then finally, we have to allocate $5 million to our special education fund for the 22-23 fiscal year. And it's interesting to note that, you know, this reimbursement rate from our state is actually the lowest reimbursement rate of the states we reimburse in the whole country. So a significant component of our operating budget must, because it's definitely our, our legal and moral obligation to assist our students who have identified disabilities, but it should be at a higher reimbursement rate than what the state is currently offering. So with all of those pieces, I'd like you to keep that in mind as you're listening to Andy talk about the budget. But before I hand it off, I have one more thing. Sorry, Andy, almost, almost one more thing. I also want you to think about the fact that this budget does not contain anything, not only for raises, but also for the really critical component of market rate adjustments. In this highly competitive time period we're living in related to educators and how few of them there are for how many jobs are open, the fact that we don't have funding for market rate adjustments is a very big deal. And I'm going to pass it over to Gina for just a few minutes before it goes to Andy for the formal presentation, because I'd like her to talk a little bit about the market rate adjustments and our inability to do it and the type of impact it's had.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bergstrom. So I want to share, I've been in Wisconsin public school employment area for 18 years and I have never seen a market that is this competitive for educators. This is my 10th year in the Oregon School District and by far the hardest year we've had in terms of later resignations than we are used to and having non-classroom unfilled positions as we start the school year. In the 10 years I have never had that, being here. We have been very fortunate that we have had wonderful candidates and have been able to recruit people and retain our amazing educators because they know that there is a plan. But I am very concerned about our ability to continue to do so in this market that is becoming harder and harder, where educators are more mobile and they are very in tune, which is good in terms of asking about not only starting salary, but salary in five years and the benefits that are available. And with us not having any contract increases the last two years has definitely impacted our ability to recruit and fill positions which, with late resignations and information that other schools are offering a higher competitive wage. And there just simply aren't enough people with the license that are needed to fill the positions. So from my perspective, starting the school year with non-classroom positions not being filled is impacting our students and in a way that I haven't seen. And we meet as Dane County HR directors once a month and that is not unique to our school district, that it really feels that everyone is in a race for the best educators. And I know that our current staff, they are, they love being here and they are sticking with us because they know that we have a plan. But I am very concerned about our continued ability to retain the best staff that we have.
So I'll start the presentation. A lot of the high points of my presentation have already been covered, but we'll talk a little bit about the nuts and bolts, so to speak, of the process. Tonight is just the preliminary budget, okay? So you're not going to see a lot of detail because we actually bring more detail to you at the budget hearing, which is part of the annual meeting, which will be in two weeks from tonight. So this process is basically to approve a posting that is in a format that the Department of Public Instruction requires us to put in the paper and it would be in the paper on Thursday this week. So a couple little things about the timeline. Our, our annual meeting is in two weeks, so the fourth Monday of September, that has been in place for a number of, of years. In the early 90s, there was a significant change that happened with revenue limits were imposed on school districts. And that's important because that's one of the things that has really restricted our ability to meet the needs of our community right now, is that revenue limit has not changed, as been mentioned before, for two years. We haven't been able to increase that revenue limit because of that law that was placed in the, in the 90s in school districts. It used to be prior to that, school districts could identify their needs and then set the levy. Now it is completely dependent on the number of students you have and the number that used to be in statute or in law, but now does, has moved into basically the biennial budget process of the state of Wisconsin. So every two years, the business managers in, in the schools in the state of Wisconsin lose a little bit more hair because we're all trying to figure out what's going to happen in the biennial budget process. And that's where we find ourselves now. This last year, as we mentioned, there were zero increase in our revenue limit and we're not sure where we're going to end up this next year as we start the process for the next biennial budget. The original budget cannot, which is the budget that we really live on, cannot, and this sounds weird, because we already started our fiscal year actually on July 1st, cannot be adopted until the end of October, simply because we don't have all the pieces of the pie to make the, to make, to make it work. The next thing that we get is on this Friday, is the third Friday, which is a special count date, which we get to count the number of students that we have. That's integral in the revenue limit calculation as to how many, how much money we have available. So it takes another week or so after the third Friday to kind of narrow all that down and identify all the kids and if we can count them or not. That seems strange, but it's because the open enrollment laws and stuff in the state of Wisconsin, there could be students that are residents of Oregon that are going to school in other places and we have to track all that down and, and make sure that we can count that. And vice versa, other school districts have to do the same with us. The other component that happens at the end of October is that we find out what our assessed values are. So that helps us set our levy rate and I'll talk about that in a moment. And our preliminary, the other component of that then is, the levy rate is also determined by how much state aid we get. And the state aid number is not certified until mid-October. So that's kind of that last piece that we need in order to kind of officially adopt the levy and put the budget together. So the last thing I'm going to mention here is, everything we've talked about and Dr. Bergstrom talked about a little bit before, is this does not include the referendum passing, simply because right now it hasn't passed. And so we are just doing it without that and therefore everything that she mentioned before is not a part of that. There are no increases in salaries, there's, and benefits associated with those salaries for the, anyone in the district. This is, this is kind of bare bones, if you would. And even in that situation, we have a $300,000 deficit, which would have been a $650,000 deficit had a week ago not happened where the governor gave us some more one-time money this last year, or this year, so that we could reduce that $650,000 gap to down to $300,000. So that, that was new information for us. We incorporated that into our budget. But again, that's one-time money. So we'll start next year, depending on what happens with the biennial budget process, at least $650,000 with a deficit, a structural deficit. Next page, oh, you gave it to me, thanks. Couple other things, all we're doing now is approving the preliminary budget. It will be subject to change, but we have to start with something and this is, this is the process that state statute requires. Since all our requirement information is not known at the annual meeting, there will even be changes after the annual meeting. So we'll do our best to project what we can. We do at least have preliminarily audited numbers that we can talk about from, from last year. last year. Last year, we actually lost between $400,000 and $500,000 in fund balance in the general fund. That was anticipated, so not something to be horribly concerned about, but we did actually reduce fund balance last year. Here are four unknowns, I've already mentioned them real quickly. State equalization aid, known in October 15th. Enrollments should be known sometime probably the end of next week or so. Assessed values, known right about October 1st, and the referendum will be known obviously the evening of November 8th. So this is my favorite sheet, and really this is the, these are the only numbers I'm going to share it this evening with you because it's, it's kind of at a very high level. We don't get into staffing and those types of things because you already approved those back in the, in the spring of the year. So you already have that information, but this is just the impact of that. So general fund numbers, you can see our fund balance starting on 7/1 is close to $15 million. You see in the transfer sources column, the fourth column over, the information that Dr. Bergstrom mentioned. We are transferring $5.4 million from our general education fund into our special education fund. That is a reason for that, a main reason for that is that the funding that goes into that fund is very, very low compared to other states. The end of the, the year, or the end of the, yeah, the end of the fiscal year, we are looking at having a little over $12 million, so about a $2.7 million reduction. Part of that is that, that $300,000 deficit that I said, that's built into this, the remaining portion is related to those things that are strategically worked out into our budget that we'll be spending, unspent funds on. Our next fund that we talk about, so the general fund, Fund 10, is the main fund that works, that manages the majority of everything in the school district, from transportation to teachers, to everything that I'm not, I'm going to mention before, or next, and the other funds, but the majority of all the expenses go through that fund. Our special projects fund is simply special activities that happen. It could be the basketball club at the, at the high school, it could be a student council, it could be a number of different things in the, in the district that are run kind of a revenue expenses. There are no property taxes or state aid that goes into that fund at all. It is simply brought using funds that are from local revenue sources. Special education fund, we've talked about, you can see that it starts with a zero budget of fund balance and it ends with a zero fund balance. That is required by law. So whatever that fund doesn't have in it, we anticipate it would need $5.4 million, but if it needs more or less, that transfer will happen from the education fund to get it to zero at the end of this calendar fiscal year. Non-referendum debt fund, this is kind of something interesting just to mention, we will make, be making our last debt payment for our non-referendum debt fund this year, this fiscal year. So that will actually take, will have a zero balance, actually, no bonds will be outstanding at the end of the fiscal year. Our debt service fund is that fund that pays for the debt that we've used, issued in the last several years for Forest Edge, the school that Mr. Prezy just mentioned, as well as some additions that we did in 2014 at this building and a lot of our other school buildings. Everything except for home corners actually got, got an addition or some remodeling at that point in time. Our long-term capital improvement fund, something that we started a few years ago, we haven't really made many deposits into it yet, but there's a timeline for that. And so by putting that $100 in there a few years ago, we started that timeline. That will become a tool for us in the future. Referendum bonds, these are the proceeds yet from Forest Edge. You can see that at the beginning of July, we still had $800,000. If we do not spend that money at the end of this year, we will move those funds back into the debt service fund and use that to abate debt service. We do have a couple of outstanding projects, there's some landscaping type things that we're doing at Forest Edge to kind of clean up some things that haven't, haven't worked very well, but they're, probably anticipate some money that would be left over from there too. Food service fund is a standalone fund. That fund, basically the revenues that we generate from it are used to pay for the expenses in that fund. That includes personnel as well as foods, food for the, and supplies for the food service program. Although it does have state and federal funds into it, there are no property tax money into that. That is simply, those state and federal funds are typically generated by per sales, so we get a little bit of money to, to help with the cost of food service for those students that can't afford it, and even some, a small amount of money for those students that can afford our, our food service program. Employee trust fund, these are, these are two funds, the employee trust fund and the OPEB fund. Employee trust fund is using funds from employee sick leave that is converted for the purpose of paying for health insurance, similar to what the county and state do for our employees. If they, if they have that need, we determine that in the, in the school district based on some questions that we're able to ask them. And then the OPEB fund is that fund that helps pay for benefits for our employees after they retire from us for health insurance purposes. The last three funds that we're going to talk about here, actually there's four, but the next three are in community education. We have, they're all kind of combined, but we break them out so we know the, how the operations of these individual things work. The pool, community education, and the performing arts center all have a component in the community education fund. What's interesting in this fund, you may notice that we had a balance at the end of last year, or the beginning of this year, at $22,526, but we are required at the end of the year have a zero budget. So that $22,500 will be used in anticipation of our budget. It will be under, under-leaved essentially, so that the hope is, or the intent is, that we'll have a zero budget at the end of the year by community ads, similar to the way what special education works, just without a transfer, just within itself. And the last fund is Carl Perkins Fund. It's a cooperative purchase federal grant that we have that Mr. Greg Granberg manages here at our school district, and he actually manages that for multiple school districts. He has a license that allows him to do that, that doesn't exist in a lot of places. So we help other school districts, and then we actually get a small portion of the proceeds that they would otherwise have, that we get to reallocate to projects in Oregon school districts for, for those services. So that is a very, very high level, what's happening in the school district. Again, this is a budget that does not include the referendum, does not include additional raises for our employees, or any raises actually, for our employees related to the last two years of compensation. So people love to jump to the mill rate, so I thought I would give you a little bit of a, a feel for that here. So we, we break the mill, the mill rate, the levy into four different categories that are related to the funds that I just mentioned before. The general fund, debt referendum, referendum debt service fund, non-referendum debt service fund, and the community services fund. The first, well, actually the first and third are related to the revenue limit, and the second one is related to referendums that we have passed and bonds that we have sold. The fourth one can be determined by our district, it is not related to the revenue limit at all. We can determine what the community service fund levy is. It's going up by a small amount this, this year as we increase our Spark program to the Forest Edge Elementary School. We currently have had Spark, that's been a very successful program that targets students that need some help, some additional help. We'll be moving that to, to Forest Edge this year as well. The one thing I do want to mention is in the referendum debt service fund, you'll see an increase in the levy. I took a strategy, and this doesn't have to be employed unless, if you tell me not to, but we took a strategy that we used last year, and we anticipated what new construction was this last year, or this year. And we tried to increase the debt service levy to basically allow us to pay off debt, and, and that would allow us to go up from $1.4 million over the levy that's needed to pay for the debt to $2.9 million. So that's indicative of this. And even with those increases, even with that increase, and the reason we, we picked that is that new construction amount, basically what we're doing is we're saying people with this, with this particular levy would pay the same amount as they would on average for the entire school district, about the same amount that they paid last year. Okay? We're basically just trying to tax the new construction that's in the district, if that makes sense. Even with that increase in that debt levy, just because of the increase in assessed values, and I would say that this is a conservative amount of 12%, we are looking for the levy rate to drop to approximately 955. My guess is it would be a little bit less. Now here's the kicker, if the referendum is approved, that levy rate of 1040, we'd probably be pretty close to what it is la, this last year. So with the increase that we've anticipated in the levy, we would see being close to 1040, anticipate. Again, that's all a projection, a lot of pieces of information have to be coming in the next 60 days or so, but that, that's where we're thinking we would be. With that said, what questions do you have for me?
All right, so we'll go around like we normally do, but we'll start with our treasurer, Troy.
Thanks, thanks Andy and Leslie and Gina for the, for the update. So I was going to ask you about the debt defeesment, but you covered that in your last point, so I think I'm good with that. My only question, other questions revolve around the OPEB and non-referendum fund 38. So we're getting close to paying both of those off in the next couple of years. What's, just generally, general numbers, I mean, what's the, what's the positive impact after those are paid off to our overall budget?
The non-referendum debt service, you can see right there, is about a $330, $340,000 positive impact.
Okay.
After this year.
Yep. And then OPEB?
OPEB, we are not fully funded yet. We are working toward it. I think we're, I think we still have, I just looked at the numbers today, I think there's still about a $2.5 million liability out there. So I think the total liability is around $7 million, and we have about four and a half or $5 million in fund balance related to that. It's actually probably on here, right? 5.4 million, so I'm a little bit off. So it's, it's in the seven to high, high seven range, I think, and so the difference is still around a $2 million liability.
So no, no immediate positive impact in that category?
No.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all I had for now.
Mary, would you like to go next?
Thank you for walking us through that. Can you remind me when the final budget is due?
Yeah, yeah, so we approve the final budget in our district typically the fourth Monday of October. That's when we have all the information that's known. What will be interesting this year, and we've done this once before, is we'll actually pass two levies because the, we have to actually certify the levy by, to the municipalities by November 10th. So, but we won't know which one to do until the evening of October, November 8th. So we'll do a conditional levy in that situation, so that that's, will still be the unknown even after the fourth Monday and Friday, we won't know what, what we're doing with that. And then if the referendum, it would, would pass, what we do is come back with a budget adjustment sometime probably in January or February, that we would go through the process that we're going through a little bit right now, but with those additional funds included.
Excellent. All right, that was the question that I had, was I was pretty sure we had to vote on it first.
Yes.
Thank you.
Leslie?
Mine was actually the same question that Mary had, so that's.
Okay, Anna, go ahead.
I just want to clarify the debt defeat, first of all, thank you.
You bet.
This is really, this is really a lot of information, a lot of numbers, and so I really appreciate the time you spent going through it. To my question, you mentioned that this preliminary budget does in fact include, did I understand correctly, two and a half million of additional debt defeesment?
2.9.
2.9. And so with that taken into account, our mill rate is actually projected at this point to be less than what it was.
Correct.
Now if we hold that 2.9 million defeesment, are we talking that the, if a referendum were to pass, would that keep the 2.9 million defeesment, or would that be, would those dollars be reallocated towards the?
It would be reallocated toward the referendum with the intent, because the intent was to take advantage of the additional net new construction in the district. And so then we could lower that, provide that break, if you would, to the taxpayers because there would be an increase, and this was all projected in the numbers that we put forward with the referendum.
Okay, that's what I understood, so I wanted to make, I wanted to clarify that particular component of this budget.
Yep.
So I appreciate that. And then, so to follow that up, if we, if we do, in fact, if we are successful with passing the referendum and we re, or we shift that 2.9 million for different purposes, we would still be looking at a mill rate projected similar to what it is today at $10.40.
Because of the increase in assessed value?
Because of that net construction.
Yep. Both the net new construction and just the appreciation of property as a whole within our district, yes.
Thank you.
So both of those things.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to clarify, I appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, Tim?
I just have a couple of questions. We focus, we're focusing a lot of our calculation on net new construction. The other way to work our way out of this challenge is obviously to grow the number of students we have.
Yes.
Because that, because that brings money from the, the state, more money on a per pupil basis from the state. Is there any indication that our count coming up later this month is going to give us any break here, or have we been very conservative, or do you think we're within 10 students of the numbers we budgeted for so far?
Here's how I try to identify that. If the principals and the schools are yelling at me for additional classroom teachers, I know I'm under.
Okay. Any yelling going on?
No yelling going on.
Okay, all right, that answers my question.
So that, that's about as close as I can get for you right now.
All right, that answers my question. The second thing is, across the board, we've seen cost increases for everything.
Correct.
And one thing that I'm always concerned about, because I see it in other districts that aren't as forward-thinking as we are, that there's deferred maintenance that starts to build up. And I know we have always been on top of our maintenance budget, and we do a great job keeping that going. And we have a placeholder for future maintenance dollars. $100 doesn't go very far, but it gets that clock started, I know that. Are there any concerns about the budget we have today that is digging a hole that we can't see until it's too late?
I think we know that there's a hole there. In fact, I was sharing with someone today, I mean, we have a 600,000 capital maintenance, two $600,000 capital maintenance allocation.
Right.
That's probably worth 75% of what it was two years ago. I mean, that, the cost of everything has just gone up.
Right, and that's why I asked the question.
So I, I wouldn't say it's going to bite us, but we, we know it's out there. Some of our parking lots are starting to get in pretty, pretty bad shape. There's some significant money that needs to go there. Our roofs took a beating this weekend. As you walk out, you'll, you'll find a little bit of a, an area that we need to correct. We jump on those very, very quickly. We take the integrity of our roofs as the most important thing because it holds, protects everything underneath it, including our kids and staff. So, you know, those types of budget allocations are going to need to be looked at. We have hoped, actually, even this predates Dr. Bergstrom, that when we additionally started growing, that we would be able to increase that budget, especially since, it was kind of in my head, like $100,000 per building makes some sense, right? Well, now we have seven buildings and we're, we're down a little bit. So I think that's something that we got to look at eventually. And like I said, the, like you mentioned before, the increase in costs for things is, is just really taking a hit on us.
Right, and I, and I've seen the $600,000 allocation for a number of years now.
Yep.
Most of the years that I've been sitting here.
Yep.
And so that's exactly why I asked the question.
I, I think it is something that we have to keep our eye on, and if we do get, and when we get new growth, because we're hoping that it's, it's out there still, even with our last enrollment projection a year ago, says that it's still out there. You know, maybe that's one of the things that we need to look at when we, when we build the budget.
All right, very good, that's all I have.
Just kind of, I have a couple of things, just pigging back a little bit on what Tim was talking about, when we look at, you know, the deficit of $650,000, and then we plugged a little bit of that with the one-time money. That is kind of the known deficit, and so, you know, we don't, we have a sense too of where CPI is going, but it's not to say that that $300,000 prediction... But it's not to say that that $300,000 prediction could not go up. The likelihood of it going down is a lot less than the likelihood of it going up, correct?
Yeah. I mean, one of the projections that we used in transportation, for instance, was we pegged diesel fuel at $5. Well, you know, gas for cars has gone down to more reasonably closer to where it was before this happened. Diesel fuel is still at 5.15, I think, the start of this month. So it has not gone down. So, yeah, if if that stays up and doesn't come back down, we we could have a larger deficit because that has an impact on our, while we pay our transportation contractors.
And then I guess related to that, I mean, you touched on it with the special ed fund in terms of by law, that has to have a zero balance. And so the bank that we have to go to is Fund 10 to fund that. And so, you know, I think we get this question a lot, or there may be some misunderstanding about school finances and school funding. Fund 10, our operational fund, is really the bank for all the other funds, but it, the general fund doesn't have a bank in any other fund. So can you explain that a little bit? Because there's, we can't co-mingle funds here.
No, no. The only two, the two funds that are co-mingled or connected at the hip are the Special Education and the and the General Education Fund. Otherwise, they do have to stand alone. You can make a one-time transfer to debt service, that type of thing. But for the most part, they are all standalone funds and they all have their own, some of them have property tax impact into them. Some of them don't. And that's how that works. I'll also say, actually, the the OPEB fund come is connected to the Education Fund because the OPEB fund actually pays for our retiree benefits on a month-to-month basis. And then what we do is we basically reverse that fund from the general fund. That's where it's budgeted. The the OPEB fund by itself doesn't have a recurring revenue source or anything other than the general fund.
So, you know, we've, as board members, have really dug deep into this budget, probably a lot more than other years because of the situation that we're in. But there's really no other stones to be overturned here to look for any?
No. The magnitude of the the dollars that we're talking about, there is no magic bunny that I can pull out of the hat with this one. In the past, we've we've come up with some some creative solutions and that type of thing. But the magnitude of the the problem here, the magnitude of the, I don't know how to how to categorize it, but the legislators basically, I don't want to say anything too bad, but them giving us zeros, zero increases over the last two years in this inflationary area where we're coming out of a pandemic, just it 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 makes no sense. And so the only way that we could figure out a way out of this was unfortunately to ask our, unfortunately or fortunately, I guess we have that one path, is to ask for the referendum to change the revenue limit.
And I know it hurts for you to present a deficit budget.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
So that's where we're at. So any other questions from board members? Any questions sparked any other questions? Okay. Dr. Bergstrom, any final words before I call for a motion?
Nothing final. Thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve this preliminary budget for 2223.
I'll make a motion to approve the 202223 preliminary budget as presented in our board packet.
Is there a second? All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay.
Can I just?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, just wanted to kind of level set, emphasize what's already been said as I'm as I'm seeing it. I mean, I think the deficit budget makes all of us pretty uncomfortable. But what helps me feel a little bit more comfortable is that we have a plan in place with the referendum coming up this fall where we will be asking our residents to 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 vote on on the future of the Oregon School District. Also, just want to point out that really our Fund 10 is flat from last year to this year. So we have not, you know, we're not proposing an increase there. I also want to point out that, you know, we heard in the news in the past week that Governor Evers has putting additional money towards schools. And when I saw the headline, I was like, great, you know, $90 million. That's wonderful. And and it's very welcome and very appreciative of it. But again, reiterating, I mean, that's one-time money, and that's $350,000 for the Oregon School District, which is 0.6% of our annual budget. So while it's while it's very, very welcome, it is not a, it is not a solution to the larger problem. Also, tonight was really the first time I was seeing the the mill rate projections. And I'm kind of pretty pleased to see that the the projected mill rate, at least very preliminary, is is looking to be about level. So for those of us that that really track mill rate, you know, that's a good thing after the after the referendum as everything shakes out that will be roughly balanced there. So just my my closing thoughts on on that motion. So.
Thank you, Troy. Any other? Go ahead, Mary. Yeah, I actually wanted to to say thank you for taking into account the mill rate as you were putting together the this incredibly massive number of numbers. And the fact that even with the referendum, the mill rate will be roughly the same. I that gives me a lot of comfort. So thank you. Any further comments? Okay, Katie, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Pinker?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Dr. Lacuta?
Yes.
Mr. Lebrun?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Andy and Dr. Bergstrom and Gina. Moving on to de-discussion items, committee reports. A policy, Heather is not here, but the policy committee will be meeting on September 26th. That is their next meeting. Moving on to B, vision steering, Troy.
Yeah, we just met prior to this meeting. And then we will go back to our regularly scheduled vision meetings. The next one will be October 4th at 5:00 PM.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, moving on to E, information items. One, opening of school 202223. Exciting. Dr. Bergstrom?
It is exciting. I get to do the fun stuff while Andy has to talk about debt defeesment. So I feel feel badly for Andy about that because look at these pictures. This was our opening to the school year assembly with staff. And you can see from the top left-hand corner that our students were a feature of that assembly. We had several students, the youngest, and I'm not kidding, the youngest was seven years old, all the way up to seniors in high school, talking about what they're most looking forward to in the upcoming school year and sharing some words of inspiration to the teachers. Because honestly, there's nothing that lights a fire in a teacher's heart more than hearing from their kids. So those wonderful, brave student souls stood in front of 600-plus adults and shared positive thoughts, and it was extraordinarily appreciated, as were the students who played in the band, because the band played us in to the gym. So it had a pep rally-type feel because the band was playing all these old favorites. And people were singing, and that was really fun. And we also had two students who played while teachers ate breakfast, played their orchestra instruments in the cafeteria. And then you can also see in the top right-hand corner that Board President Flanagan was a featured speaker. So it was a really lovely kickoff. The energy was very positive. And I will say that has continued. One more positive thing. This is a relatively new tradition. The seniors arrive, not all of them, but quite a few, as you can see. They arrive at school, the first day of school, before the sun rises. And they all gather on the track and watch it rise together for the first day of their last year in high school. And I think that's a really lovely, positive tradition. So very appreciative that they take such time to be together in such a thoughtful way. And another tradition is the first day of school pictures. I certainly wish that when my children were little, I had thought to make those cute little signs reminding me how old they were, because trust me, 25 years later, you will not be able to tell the difference between first grade and second grade, and you'll be beating yourself up over it. So I think this is absolutely lovely. And you'll also notice that it's students from all different age ranges. Because when you, when you are a parent, the first day of senior year is just as precious as the first day of kindergarten. And then we have, I would say, photos that are, they spark feelings about the beginning of the new school year. You can start up there with the full bike racks because the weather's good. And so kids, particularly once they get to the fifth and sixth grade levels, the idea of riding their bike to school is very exciting, and you tend to fill the bike racks at the schools that serve those grades. And then you see our little ones getting off the bus and their principal bending down to check to make sure we're getting all the right kids off and all the right kids on. And I also want to thank our families for the incredible patience they displayed as we worked out the kinks for the new year in busing. And also our bus contractors and drivers, they were absolutely tremendous. They stopped in the road and just made sure that any child standing there knew what was going on and could ask a question, even if it wasn't their bus. And I just really appreciate how well they know our students and how much thought and care they put into ensuring that that first touch of the day with school is a positive one. And then you see all those backpacks, cute as can be. And you know what's really nice about Ready, Set, Go conferences? Is that you can bring all of your heavy-duty school supplies to Ready, Set, Go. And then your first day of school, you have only lunch in your backpack. And that's kind of a nice feeling for those little ones. So I think that's another huge plus for Ready, Set, Go. Then on the bottom, you see all of the positive chalk art that greets students as they come into the building. And I also want to say a big thank you to the Oregon PTO because they put together these beautiful planters. RCI has, oh my goodness, it's probably eight or nine gorgeous, really tall planters that are a part of their landscaping. And as a project, the PTO had people sponsor the planters and then made them look beautiful and put fun, encouraging notes in the planters so that when people went up to see what's in there, they got fun statements back. And then our food service, you know, right from the beginning. And this was amazing, the very first day. I bet we were one of the only school districts that you could find that had a fully-staffed food service. That was, don't ask about day two, but day one was beautiful. And then you can see our sweet student enjoying her her healthy snack because we know how important it is that our kids are fueled physically and mentally and all that we put into their, all we put into their heads and hearts. And then finally, relevant and, whoa, whoa, got a little crazy with my thumb there. Hold on. I don't even know how that happened because it was just a very, there. Relevant and empowering learning underway. And you know, this is directly connected, as is everything else that I've discussed tonight, not only to our values, but also to the board priorities. Academic growth and readiness and physical and emotional well-being as areas of focus. So everything that we've discussed tonight, we can tie back to what the board has said we need to prioritize. And we're doing that with care and intention. And you can see it in the pictures that are in front of you now. That is it for the back-to-school update.
All right. I think we can keep moving on.
All right. Then I'm going to invite Jason Zurowick and Brad Ashmore up, our summer school principals. Katie Anderson is also one of the summer school principals, but she couldn't be here tonight. So tonight, it is the Brad and Jason presentation, and we're very glad to have them.
Good evening, everybody. I am Brad Ashmore. I'm one of the associate principals at the high school, and this is Jason Zurowick. That's my honor. It's my fourth summer semester working in the OSD. So we had a phenomenal summer together this year. And as Leslie mentioned, we're missing two key team members. Jason and I have worked together for three summers so far. Katie's not able to be here. She coordinated our special education program this summer. And then Angie Dunn stepped in as a summer school coordinator for Nancy Baguki this year after Mary Hermis started the work and did just a phenomenal job. So two key members for our team, too. So as you can see from the slide, we've got some great pictures. I think the one thing that'll stand out hopefully the most is just all of the smiles during summer semester. Our families, I think, absolutely love the program. We received a lot of really good feedback this summer from our families. We also know that we continue to evolve. We continue to want to make our program even better for the families in the Oregon School District. So if you can go to the next slide, I'll hit some of the highlights. So enrollments, I think John went through enrollments a few weeks ago. But just highlighting, we had 1,615 students who enrolled in our summer semester program. And we had 6,471 course offerings or courses taken by those students compared to 5,667 the year before. So we went up a little bit for courses there. So it was really good. The variety of class offerings, I think, is an extreme highlight for our program. We have classes from yo-yos to say yes to math. So it's all across the board. And I think one of the things that's really amazing for our kids and families is they have the opportunity to choose which classes they want to do. So just lots of fun and lots of engaging learning that happens during the month of July. Our student intern program is also something that I'd like to highlight this year. Greg Granberg and Andrea Cannell at the high school helped to run and coordinate our student interns. We had 52 students this year. There were blue shirts all over the building. We had student interns in our classes helping to support those teachers. And they also were around the building in the hallway. So you could see our high schoolers and some of our even middle schoolers, rising eighth graders to ninth graders, participating in the intern program. And what I really appreciate and like about the student intern program is it's a direct relation to our Portrait of a Graduate, which we're kind of rolling out. And I think it's just a great opportunity for a great summer job for our students. Finally, the final highlight that we just kind of wanted to bring up, our meal service. We found out a week before summer semester started that they were going to continue to offer free meals, which was phenomenal and fantastic. Our students' needs were met. We had 998 breakfasts served this year, and then we had 4,851 lunch meals served. So it was another great, just example of how we're helping to meet the students' needs this year. And it was it was a blast. And like I said before, we want to also think about how we can continue to make the program even better within our district. So Jason's going to talk about next, moving forward.
All right. As as we continue to look at offerings for our families, next year's summer school dates, we have July 6th through the 28th. It's one less day than we had this year. The 4th of July just lands in a really weird spot. So we found it very beneficial to start one day later. The previous year, I think we started on the 5th, but we noticed we had a lot of family members gone or students gone, as well as we had more subs that day because of the holiday. Our goal, as we continue to move forward, is looking at trying to get that 20 days of summer school. So that way, when we look at either four-week sessions or two-week sessions, we have equal amount of days. Looking at next summer, we're probably going to be looking at eight days and nine days for the respective sessions. That way it's balanced out. So there's not a huge discrepancy where you have maybe seven days in one session and then 10 in the other session. Another thing that we're looking at doing is switching our database. Our database has been pretty strong for for quite a while. However, it's a different database that not all of our families are used to using on a regular basis, such as Infinite Campus. Some of our our local school districts, such as Sun Prairie and Portage, have used our current database and switched about two years ago to Infinite Campus, and they say it's very seamless. And it's really beneficial because the families are really used to using that. So that's one of the things that we're going to be doing, is exploring that option. A lot of our communication with families between the months of April and July is navigating the database in our our summer school system, whereas we'd rather be talking with families about what are the best options for their students versus how to create an account again and how to get those kids in the in the classes. So that's one thing that we're going to be looking at. Also continuing to looking at our growth of seven through 12 course offerings. Over the last two years, we continue to increase the amount of options and opportunities for our middle and high school age students. And we're going to continue looking at growing those options for our students. This past summer, our strength and our speed and strength classes were maxed out. It's great to see the kids being healthy and active and continuing to want to just grow from a maturity standpoint. We also had, we had to add a couple of class sections, such as volleyball, and we had some, we were going to do pickleball because the tennis courts weren't going to be available, and that became available. So that was another option. So again, continue to have course offerings for our our students throughout the summer. This year, we had a great opportunity with Esther Funds to work with some of our students who are below benchmark in some of our classes specifically around the areas of literacy. And we're hoping to be able to creatively problem solve about having staff members working with those students as well to continue bridging the gap as far as where we want them to be ready for. to be ready for the fall. And finally, we want to continue that love and passion for learning and building the connections between our staff members and our students and families.
All right, great. Any comments or questions from the board?
I just have one, and I don't know if you're going to have the stuff.
Leslie, can you turn on your mic?
Forgot about that. I just have one, and I'm not sure if you're going to have the information. You mentioned about how many, how much food you had served over the summer. I'm wondering if you have the information about what that looked like in years previous to what we're at now, or, like, has that expanded? Or is that pretty much consistent of what it's been in the past?
It's hard to judge in the past, because we just started doing the breakfast last school year. So I think we would have two years of data on that, so that's something we could-
What about for the lunches?
Lunches, again, that's-
Same kind of thing. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Anna.
Just one quick question. When you mentioned the Estor funding for continuing to support those learning opportunities for kids not at benchmark, was that just additional staff resources that could work more one-on-one with those particular students? Is that how that was?
We did more of a push-in model, where we looked at class sizes, and looked at flexible grouping, and working with smaller groups of students within a larger classroom.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, guys. You know, I can't say enough about our summer school program and what you guys have done over the last couple of years, and we look at it as an extension of learning. And so not only is it helping kids continue to learn, so that there's not a slide as they start the next school year, but it's getting kids to grade-level benchmarks, and it's also promoting fun. You know, we are a model for our summer school here, and you guys have done an amazing job. So we just want to share our appreciation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Back to you, Dr. Bergstrom. Thank you. I do, I want to say thank you to the whole summer school team, not only the leadership of Jason and Brad and Katie Anderson, and the hard work of Angie Dunn, but all of our staff, who worked all last year through some very challenging circumstances, with not having enough substitutes and people covering classes for one another, and so many of them yet found the energy to do summer school, too. And not only just do it, but do it well, and with an open heart and a big smile. So once again, our staff's pretty fabulous. And now I'll move to the visioning and strategic planning component of our update. And we've accomplished a lot of really great things last year, and we're headed into this year with our new vision, Portrait of a Graduate. And it's new and updated, but the board has been forward-thinking for many years, and we've always known that as important as graduating with the right number of credits and demonstrating academic competencies are, it's vitally important. But it's also important what else they can do in life, and the empathy they show one another, and their ability to think critically and creatively. And the Portrait of a Graduate vision really articulates that well, as do the board's strategic priorities for the next three years. And I want to make sure that you're hearing these in all of the things that we're talking about. I think summer school actually is a way to look at how all five of those priorities actually integrate into the summer school experience. So with all that we're discussing, I want to make sure that we're pulling these out of all of those pieces, particularly Priority Four, because we spent a good portion of the beginning part of our meeting talking about Priority Four, which is enhancing the future financial health of the school district. And one of the strategies that we're utilizing to do that, of course, is the board taking action to put a referendum on the November ballot. And that referendum has very specific priorities, and these are the priorities that were discussed in the information sessions this summer, where people were able to give us their feedback on whether or not these were also important to them. And they were. This is very important to the community members who were able to attend, and that is keeping class sizes similar to what they are today, offering competitive salary and benefits, continue to provide mental health services, and pay for the staff positions that were funded with one-time money, and academic support, as well as mental health support. And then having the necessary operational funds to meet the needs of our students and families. And that was, you know, highlighted this evening, that without the referendum, that is very challenging. And I wanted to make sure that we went over the importance of understanding the impact of one-time funds one more time. And I'm sure we'll continue to talk about this every time we talk about the referendum. And it was exciting, August 30th, when Governor Evers announced the K-12 additional funding. But what we need to continue to emphasize is that it was one-time funding. So you can't pay salaries and benefits for someone with a regular contract, a contract that renews every year, with one-time funding. So this $350,000 you see here in the funding that we would be receiving from the announcement that came from Governor Evers, that one-time funding is actually used to pay down the deficit that we have one time. The deficit goes back up to $650,000 if there's no difference. And I also want to point out that all of the one-time funds that we continue to have access to, we will be using all of it to fill budgetary holes should the referendum not pass. And then there's also, I want to point out, the $61,000 for mental health support, and once again, very appreciated, and we will find important ways to support our students with this funding. But it cannot be used for salary and benefits, because it's all one-time funding. So it's important that our community knows as much as possible about the referendum so that they can make an educated decision when they vote in November. So we've held, or we have scheduled many presentations throughout the community in order to ensure that we're giving people as much information as possible. But we have three specific community open houses, and you can see the dates and times on the screen, September 27th, October 6th, and October 15th. And that's when we will be doing a short presentation, inviting in all interested community members, who after the short presentation will be able to ask our resident experts questions on everything that they would like to know about the referendum and the proposal that the board voted on last month. We also have an updated school funding website attached to OregonSD.org. Please take a look. There's an excellent FAQ that will answer many of the questions that people may have as they're gathering their information. And also watch your mailboxes for the Community Informational Mailer. It should be in your mailbox sometime next week. That's a two-page mailing, two sides to one page, that will give you additional information to help you as a community member best understand the referendum and what has led up to that important question that will be on the ballot in November. We already did the teaching and learning update. That was our guest speaker. So we would be moving into superintendent's report unless anyone has any questions on the last small segment.
On the open house information there?
Yes.
The locations were not on the slides. Are they available on the website?
They are on the website, and they're on the mailer that's coming to your house next week.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, superintendent's report. All right, so I want to say a very big congratulations to Chris Mitchell, who's our middle school science teacher in eighth grade, but he's also our boys' head soccer coach, and now he's the National Federation of High Schools Boys Soccer Coach of the Year for Wisconsin. And so many, many thanks to Chris and his whole coaching team, and what they do for our students. And the soccer part of it is great, but the most important part is the way they're models for our students, and how to treat people, how to win and lose with grace. And I think we're all very proud of all of our coaches, but to have this type of recognition is very nice, because it means other people see how special these people are, too. Our school-to-career highlight of the week, Haley works at Fox Labs at UW-Madison, and she is a part of the Dane County Biotechnology Youth Apprenticeship Program. She actually has to take a class at the Bio-Pharmaceutical Technology Center every Wednesday night in addition to what she's doing here in her lab work. So we have some really tremendous opportunities for our students, and it's exciting when we see them in this type of work environment, because who knows what the future holds for Haley. And here's another example of that. We had, this is so funny, and many thanks to our Student Services team at the high school, they had a registration party for all the students who are taking UW-Madison classes as part of their Start College Now program. So you can see all of them there, registering for classes. We actually have 24 students taking college courses this year, with titles as varied as Introduction to Kinesiology, to General Anthropology, to Diesel Shop Skill Fundamentals. So there are a lot of different college-level classes that our students are able to take part in, and I love that we are helping them do the important parts of registration, because that will help them next year or the year after, when they're actually in their post-secondary opportunity, that they've already had experience registering for college classes. Another great experience, another great learning opportunity for our students, of course, is our home construction class. And you can see these pictures, they're already well on their way. We're very grateful to the partnership with Tim O'Brien Homes, and I think you heard earlier this meeting that Tim O'Brien Homes made a donation to the class construction, our construction class. But once again, you have students who are getting excellent experiences that are benefiting them in ways that are academic and beyond, because it's opening up doors that weren't open to them prior. And we also know that our co-curriculars are extraordinarily important to our students, whether it's clubs or it's athletics. These are the things, these are the memories that they take away from high school. And our athletics is an example, and our clubs do this, too. They teach about whatever the content is, or whatever the skill is, but they also are about so much more. So this is an example of our boys' cross-country team helping out with our community by doing highway cleanup. And once again, it's an example of how important it is to think of the whole child and all of the different ways that we can help them grow up to be what's envisioned in our Portrait of a Graduate, and how everybody's a part of this. Our coaches, our advisors in our clubs, every educator, our bus drivers, our food service people, we're all in it. And then just a fun celebration, big orange chair pictures. And the first one over on the side, you can see our members of our middle school staff on the first day. And the students in the middle are some of our student speakers from the first day of school. So they spoke in front of 600 people, and then came out and sat in the big giant chair. And then we have another family with a wide-ranging age of students who are a part of it. And then we have a whole bunch of cuties here. And then finally, another great age range, showing that it's fun for the little ones, as well as the older kids, to take a seat in the big orange chair. It's even fun for our pets. So that's a cute picture, too. Now I'm going to hand it back to Andy one more time for some nice news about Forest Edge, and that will conclude the superintendent's report.
So I had to bite my tongue all through Joe Parisi's report, and I apologize, I didn't get to tell him, and he left. But we turned the solar on at Forest Edge Elementary at 3:45 PM, September 1st, 2020, which means we just completed our second year, and we are net zero again by over 20 megawatts, I believe. So not as much as last year, but, you know, the school's in full operation the entire year last year, the kitchen was in place, everything was going on. So still very, very happy and proud to share that news with everybody.
All right, great. It's always fun to end the meetings that way, to talk about all the different ways and all the different things we're doing in a thriving school district. So thank you very much for putting that together. Okay, closing, future agenda. We know that our next meeting is the annual meeting in two weeks. We will not have a board meeting after that, so that will be our meeting that evening. And so moving on to checkout, I'll start over here. Leslie, anything for checkout?
I just want to thank-
Oh. It's all right.
Forgotten that all night. I just wanted to thank Andy and Dr. Bergstrom for all the work that they've put into the presentations that they've been giving us, because I know that's a ton of work. And thank you, Erica. I know you're not up here at the table, but I know that you have done a big core of this. So just thank you all for the effort you've gone to help us to understand where we're at.
Thank you, Leslie. Anna?
I'm just going to say a big thanks to all of the teachers and staff for the start of an awesome school year. My kids have come home just having a blast, and I think it's, I've heard really good feedback, and it's just felt like a really high-energy, fun start to the year. So I just hope that that continues. So thanks.
Tim?
I, too, want to thank Andy particularly, and Leslie, for the education. And when I started out as a school board member a number of years ago, that was my, that was my number-one thing I told people. What do you want to get out of this? I told them, it's going to be a great education. And so every meeting I come to is a great education, so thank you. I really do appreciate it from both of you.
Mary?
Just a big thank you. That's all.
Troy? All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. We are adjourned at 8:11. Thank you, everyone.